How are you? We got five thirty, guys. Before we stand for the pledge, today's been a very sad day and a lot of chaos. So I would like to read this before we we stand for the pledge. On this day, we remember nearly three thousand souls souls lost in the terrorist attacks of September eleventh, two thousand and one. We remember the parents, children, friends, and coworkers whose lives were cut short in an instant. We also remember the many first responders who died from related illnesses in the years since. This is a day to do. This is a day to reflect not only on the pain of that loss, but on how their memories call us to live with courage and sense of shared responsibility towards others. Let us now observe a moment of silence to honor those we lost, those we lost in the enduring legacy of resilience left they left behind. Thanks, guys. Stand for the pledge. Would you like to lead us in the pledge?
United States of America into the Republic for its essence, our nation under God, in the middle of the liberty and justice for all.
Thanks.
Danny David.
Here.
Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Charles Little T. Mark Cerber.
Present.
Craig Scott.
Approval of agenda. Any additions or corrections?
No.
Someone like to entertain a motion?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Motion Commissioner Serbuk.
Support.
Support from Commissioner Scott. Any further discussion?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries item three declarations of conflicts of interest. Any commissioners?
None.
None on this agenda.
Item before review of minutes. We have August twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, regular meeting minutes.
Read the minutes. Make a motion to accept the minutes presented.
We have a motion, Commissioner Scott.
Support.
Support from Commissioner Serbuk. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Review of minutes, September fourth, twenty twenty five, committee of the whole meeting minutes.
I had the opportunity to review them. I would make a motion. We approved the panel of whole minutes from September the fourth.
We have a motion, Commissioner Serbuk. Support from Commissioner Mayhew. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Item five, public comment and agenda item manners only. Any public comment in the room? Any public comment on the phone? Item six, we received correspondence from Wallyance related to their August twenty fifth, twenty twenty five meeting minutes and September twenty second, twenty twenty five meeting minutes. Those have been received and filed. Item seven, we have a public hearing. This, I'm gonna need a motion to go into public. This is for an application of Michigan State Housing Development Authority Community Development Black Grant Funds to be opened. The purpose of the hearing is to gain citizenship input prior to submission of the application to begin a countywide homeowner rehabilitation program. The county is applying for a grant of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Rules of public comment as noted under agenda four may apply to all speakers. The chairperson will declare the hearing closed after all who wish to speak have been heard. I need a motion to go into a public hearing.
Make a motion that we go into public hearing for the purposes of grant application for the Michigan State Housing Development Authority Community Development Black Grant.
We have a motion, Commissioner Serbuk. Support from Commissioner Mayhew to go into a public hearing. Roll call vote.
Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Mark Cerber.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes. Leanne, come on up.
I had sign and chief everybody sign through that way I can show the mission that we had a public hearing and those that were there. The purpose of the hearing is to make everybody aware about the CDBG program and what you're applying for and what is the proposed plan as far as how to use it. One of the things that I want to mention is the fundings that we're applying for is two hundred and ninety five thousand dollars. Two hundred and fifty thousand is for the rehab portion of it. Forty dollars plus forty five thousand is for the admin that we're allowed to draw off at that grant, which is eighteen percent. Um. The program is geared towards low, very low income family. With the income between thirty and eighty percent area median income. So it's pretty much what I have in the program right now, so that hasn't changed. Except when it comes out with the new guidelines. Then we gotta bump it up. Program will be used to do windows, doors, roof, insulation furnace, and hot water heater. So if they have any cosmetic repairs they want, it's not going to be eligible for that program at all. Well, they have to find other funding sources in the system. So that way they can get everything done that they want to have done. If there was some grants that you've had through the years. And part of the application, we have to say, this is what you have, this is what we use, and this is how much in projects that we did. I'm gonna read it off to you so that way you know it's in the application. You received USDA Rural Development Housing Preservation Grant, which is what I always give for you every year whenever I need it. And that was in two thousand and nineteen grant. Received the amount of a hundred and sixty two thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars. We did eighteen projects and it was completed successfully, so we used all the money up like we were supposed to. And then when I say successfully is because you had the audit done, which was there was no findings, and then that's what you want. Okay? The next one is USDA Rural Development Housing Preservation Grant. Received that in two thousand and twenty one. Grand amount was to fifty thousand dollars. We did eight projects. And again, it was completed successfully. And then we have one more that we listed on here. USDA Rural Development Housing Preservation Grant in two thousand and twenty two. Received a grant for eighty seven thousand, two hundred dollars. We did ten projects and that's not quite close out yet. So there's still some money available to be able to use on project. So we put that one down as monitoring because they have a guilt that they want us to put on. Then your next one was Misha, the MIHO program that we got for you. For two thousand and twenty three. Grand amount was two hundred and sixty two thousand, five hundred dollars plus an amendment. That we got an additional dollars of twenty five thousand dollars. We did nine projects that are completed and we got three that are yet to be completed. So that one we labeled as monitoring. And then, of course, the last one is regard to the grant that we're going to apply on your behalf. There's reflection in my notes here. There will be an annual profile that I have to update for you before I even submit the application. I want to get the application submitted Monday if I can. Because I'm leaving after after Wednesday. I'll be gone for twenty five days.
Good for you.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it. And then the grant will we, Misha said we had up to a maximum of forty thousand per project with the grant. But my goal is to do ten projects, so I should be able to keep that down as as low as I can. The lower I get it, the more projects I can do. And I, and no land contracts. We can't do land contract, no mobile home. It has to be one year ownership and taxes should have to be current. And that is pretty much it.
Questions for Leanne.
I have none.
Perfect. Thank you for all your hard work, Leanne. They send a lot of people your way.
Yeah, well, we're gonna keep the momentum going as long as they have the funds that are available. I know that I should mention this too as well is that the last time that you guys had CDBG fund was in two thousand and fourteen. And so it's been a long time coming. And in fifteen, the governor had taken that CDBG funds away from Misha and handed it over to MEDC. MEDC did not do housing programs. They did other things with it. And so then, I think it was last, last two years, governor turned it back over to Misha, so now Misha got the CDBG fund. I'm not sure if CDBG fund can be available after the grant period because Trump has a mini budget. And he cutting out CDBG fund. So we'll see what happens.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other public comments? We're in public hearing. Any public comment in the room? Any public comment on the phone?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Motion Commissioner Scott.
Or.
Or Commissioner Serbuk for the discussion. Roll call vote. Then you didn't have anything to add, did you? Okay. Sorry.
Mark Cerber.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Public hearing is closed. Item eight, consent agenda. How do you guys want to do this? Yeah, we're right there right now.
Yeah, let's just. I'll just take them one by one, one by two here.
Item A, resolution to authorize a grant application for Michigan State Housing Development Authority Community Development Black Grant Funds. That is what we just discussed for the amount of grant for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the grant application.
Motion Commissioner Scott.
Support.
Support from Commissioner Serbuk for the discussion. Roll call vote.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Mark Cerber.
Yes.
Item A B, resolution to accept audio system quote, this resolution is sponsored by informational technology director Tom Spencer. Ogumaw County has a duty under the American with Disabilities Act to provide necessary reasonable auxiliary aids and services for individuals with disabilities who plan to attend public meetings. The audio system that serves the Board of Commissioners meeting room is obsolete and does not provide optimal amplification. The Information Technology Director researched audio system options available Ogumaw County and has determined that smart homes, smart homes, smart offices is a service vendor best suited to provide and install necessary auto system components. Approval of the resolution will accept the vendor's quote of eighteen thousand, six hundred and nine dollars and eighty cents to provide these services plus a ten percent contingency for any additional work deemed necessary, subject to prior approval by the board. Funds for this project will be drawn from the delinquent tax revolving fund.
Oh. I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution.
Motion Commissioner Serbuk. Support from Commissioner Mayhew. Discussion Commissioner Scott.
No, I I mixed up with a different resolution. No, did you look it over? Did you get everything on there that you wanted? Was your mute button?
He know better. I need the last. Any, any further discussion? Roll call.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Mark Cerber.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Item nine, a Clint Marshall Ogumaw County Road Commission related to the road commissioner's health insurance benefit. Section five dash one of the Board of Commissioners rules of procedures provides that any elected official may sponsor an agenda item. Clint Marshall, an elected Ogumaw County Road Commissioner, asked to address the board about participation in the road commissioner's health insurance benefit. Section eight of the Public Highways and Private Roads Act reserves to the Board of Commissioners the authority to fix the compensation of county road commissioners. On January twenty third, twenty twenty five, the Board of Commissioners approved resolution twenty five dash one two to establish road commissioners' compensation, which included the ability to purchase health insurance, vision, and dental at a hundred percent of the cost. Come on up a clip.
Well, to start with, um, I was a little bit, um, a little bit confused. My concern was is we had the option, had the option to purchase at a hundred percent cost. So that was my initial concern. Given my situation, I don't want to be on the open market searching for insurance.
So what's changed?
It used to be, um, the road commission used to cover our health benefit, our, which, um, Randy gave me the breakdown in like a family plan was like nineteen hundred a month, which is excessive for for the amount of time we serve. So anyway, um, I wanted to have it to where we could purchase it. Really, today, my only ask is, is, um, we, we get three thousand dollars a year, two hundred dollars a meeting, and then our night meetings are fifty. And, you know, if you're gonna go to a township meeting or something like that, I mean, it's typically a three to four hour deal. If they, if you, if you guys could raise that, that would be helpful. What we're getting, what we're getting right now would cover a single subscriber, but it's a long ways off of like a family plan, which I did have. So that's really my only ask.
I guess I'm confused. So you've you've had health insurance through the road commission, correct? So, and it says in January, so I guess what changed from January twenty third until now?
They eliminated healthcare for the commissioners for the road.
When? We didn't approve that.
Yeah.
Yes.
On January twenty third, the workers approved us with the ability to purchase health insurance. So we just left it up to them to purchase their health insurance.
Right.
But through the road commission, correct?
But we set the road commissioners' salaries.
I know that.
Yeah. Okay, I know you know.
But they had the ability to purchase the health insurance. That hasn't changed, right?
Right, but up until then, they were provided healthcare.
Along with the compensation.
Along with the salary.
Okay.
See, and that ended.
We raised the salary and put them on the, to buy their own health insurance.
And we raised the salary to what they recommended, what they asked for. And I wanted to go much higher.
See, and in the the situation I'm in is, um, my two fellow commissioners are eligible for Medicare. So.
They don't care.
And they came here and asked it.
You know, they're they're actually getting a pay raise.
So I guess my, what have you been doing from January till now?
It renewals not until October first.
That wasn't my aware. I was confused. So what does it cost you to purchase it through the road commission?
Uh, Brandy gave me a quote of like the family plan is nineteen hundred a month. Nineteen, I think nineteen twenty five, um, which.
That you would have to pay to have the road commissioners' insurance. What's it gonna cost the road commission?
Nothing.
Nothing.
He's paying a hundred percent.
But if we approve, that's the road commission's gonna pay for it. That's gonna be part of his compensation.
No, he's asking us to raise his, his salary.
Yeah, I'm I'm not here to ask for my insurance being paid because.
Okay, that's where I'm, I'm just making it clear.
Just to be clear, I understand that that's excessive for the amount of time that we put in up there. You know, um, I'm very thankful I had it, you know, I mean, very thankful. But I don't, I don't necessarily expect it because based on the hours that we spend related to our position, that's, it's just, that's just a lot. So.
So right now, how much are you sure to pay for that with your, with all your compensation that you just said, two hundred dollars per meeting and, which isn't very much? Your meetings are typically, do you have them twice a month, correct?
Yeah.
And how long do your meetings last? I have never been to one.
It's short, an hour.
Oh, really?
A long ones, two. Yeah, a long ones, two.
Rarely are we there more than two hours.
Yeah. It is, he's gonna be probably sixteen thousand dollars shy for the year.
About a thousand a month is what I figured it'd cost.
Okay. Maybe.
So what do you need as far as to cover? What are you asking for exactly?
You know, I don't, unfortunately, I don't have time to attend a lot of night meetings, but if I do, I would like that to be more worthwhile because right now it's fifty dollars. I mean, if you go to foster township from, from, from like where we live, that area, I mean, you're forty minutes drive time.
You know, we've been having this conversation because we can't, the board changed in January there and we're unable to adjust our own compensation. And very much like you, this is a very thankless job. Um, and the amount of negativity that you get from it is unbelievable. Um, do we definitely, and the meetings and the travel time and the time, it.
You really wonder why you do it. Outside of, outside of being very committed to the, to the community, you know, I mean.
Which is typically a negative impact. So again, but but we looked at possibly adjusting, um, going to, because we don't get paid to go to township meetings. Um, and they last anywhere from one to, you know, I walked out of one the other night that was over two hours. Um, possibly compensating us for the, for that, and we're unable to do any of that as a, as a bore.
I've got one that I'm happy if it's done in two hours.
So I agree with you. I I think that's some incentive to go to these meetings, otherwise, especially with the beating that you guys often take as well. Um, I fifty bucks with gas prices with time. We all work. We work at.
I was in attendance on their meeting, not only just this yesterday, but when they talked about this before, and I told them they were nuts to, not to take what we get for salary wise. Back when, back when commissioners got, um, healthcare was still four thousand dollars a year salary. And then we dropped the healthcare and went to twelve thousand. And, and, uh, I told them they're nuts. I mean, yeah, you can, you can say your job lasts as long as a meeting. It doesn't. Anytime somebody stops you along the street and asks you a road, road question, or like they ask us commissioner question, I'm on the clock.
To, yeah.
And if I was an attorney, two hundred and fifty bucks an hour and you start talking to me.
Well, no, fair to do like that, that issue that they had on, uh, Brennswas Street up by Clear Lake.
Yep.
I wasn't real familiar with it. I drove up there.
Yep.
I spent an hour driving around because I thought it come out to, um, the connector road that goes up to Rose City Road, um.
Wait, for late?
Yes.
Okay.
No service.
Yeah.
Couldn't get a hold of the gentleman. I mean, I'd hear him for a second, couldn't get a hold of him because he was meeting me.
Yeah. Yep.
So, you know, that. I mean, you know, it was a half hour drive up there and I spent forty minutes driving around till I found him and then we drove around and looked at the road and, you know, long story short, I, I, I was, it was, it was like a four hour deal by the time I got done.
Absolutely.
Which, you know, again, like you're saying, that's not like meeting time. That's not.
That's your job.
That, you know, but what I signed up for. And the guy was, I mean, they were very thankful. I can't say that I really did much, but I mean, they were, they were happy to see me.
Well, we give you a raise. We give the whole board a raise. Right, Tim?
Yeah, yeah.
Be across the board.
Sure, yeah.
You know, what kind of sparked this conversation though is, is we are all aging and trying to make these positions look more appetizing for people coming in because they just don't. We have to give some type of incentive. There just has to be. Um, so I, I, what happened, you guys, the healthcare, I remember when that, when they had the meeting, that was right when I came into office with the healthcare thing. It was somebody who was leading office, a road commissioner, want to continue with health insurance.
Oh, that was, uh, Mark Williams.
That's when it got dropped or changed.
He was at, yeah, he, he, he got Cobra because he was done. He was voted out. And, uh, well, that, he got voted out because that was your fault, wasn't it?
But isn't that when the.
He just wanted to keep going with health, health insurance, and he, he was willing to pay for it. And the union is the ones that really knocked up a big blame about it.
Which he had, he had the right to do the Cobra plan and, you know, isn't there like a certain amount of time that you can stay on?
That's what sparked, I think, all of this conversation. So I guess what raise are you looking for or asking for? What exactly are you looking for? Do you know? Do you have it wrote down?
No, I, I mean, I just come up to have a discussion and really a couple of you guys and I mean.
Well, if you think you're.
There's Scots there regularly and.
If you think you're twelve, a thousand a month behind, then you're asking for twelve thousand dollars a year over the top, over top of the three thousand that you get, right? Basically.
I'm not.
We're at fourteen. I don't have a problem one going to fourteen. I mean, I don't see why they can't have what we got.
Well, I'll be completely honest with you. I'm a dairy farmer and I'm used to getting paid what they want to pay us. Not. I'm not trying to milk anybody here, okay? I'm not throwing out any demands, but I just, I, you know, I.
Well, we're asking you and you're telling us that you're gonna be twelve thousand dollars behind. You know, I think it's gonna be more than that because the bill at just shy of two thousand dollars a month is twenty four thousand dollars a year. And, and then you're, you're not getting compensated for anything you're doing. You're just taking that dollar for dollar and giving it to the insurance company.
You'll ask me somewhere at the end.
Well, I mean, you know, uh, uh, well, the thing is, is, you know, he's getting, he's getting a salary. He's getting per diems now and he's, he's making gas money. But if, if it comes down to twenty four thousand dollars a year, all of it's gonna go right to, to healthcare. It's just not gonna.
Which I think is kind of what he's looking for is enough to cover his healthcare bill.
Well, I'm not, not even necessarily a family plan, but if we could get closer, you know, I mean, the day, the days of people paying for, you know, having your insurance completely paid for, I think, are because of the cost is over. But I'd like to get closer.
What do you want? Three thousand, four thousand, five thousand? What do you want?
People, typically, people come to us with, with, with numbers and then we, we go.
Then we.
We tell them, maybe we'll think about it. Um, no, but I totally understand that. Two hundred dollars a meeting, we used to only have, I think, when I first started, two meetings a month and then it kind of went to three or two meetings and then committed the whole, I mean, we're here now for, for meetings a month and they last anywhere from an hour to three or two and a half for sure.
I don't have a problem, five thousand dollars a raise for each of the road commissioners. I don't have a problem with that at all. That's something that will help you.
Yeah.
You mean, so you want it into the, how do you want to put it?
You have a base salary, you have three thousand. Yeah, I'm willing to bump that to eight thousand. That would help a lot.
Comments, Commissioner, and Tim?
The only hesitation I would have on this is your money. This is road commission money that's.
Yeah, and why spend it somebody else?
Get the manager.
So, yeah, maybe spend a week here, get, gather.
Numbers.
Numbers and thoughts from the road commission to make sure you can afford it. Uh, because it's coming out of that budget. It's not coming out of the counties.
Well, I, I will speak to that a little bit, um, which it's not. You know, I mean, I, I don't make decisions for the road commission all week, obviously, but, um, since, what, what was the date on that? Um, January?
Twenty third.
Yes, um, there's been some pretty substantial raises in the front office, which I think rightfully so. I think they were, they were well deserved. But I mean, that kind of tells me that they're not as worried about money as what we discussed in January because it just got reallocated somewhere else.
Well, the next road.
Do you have something?
Is two weeks from yesterday, so it'll be a day before our meeting. I mean, if, if Tim, you feel comfortable with, he goes back, they discuss it. If they, they agree on something like that.
Yeah, it shouldn't be that.
I'll probably be there and I'll probably tell them that they should spend more, so.
Five grand on three of it. This would impact all three of, uh, three of you, correct? So fifteen thousand dollars to their budget.
And, and again, you know, I mean, that, that is, um, you know, I feel that's more than certainly more than I expected. I, I would still like to discuss the night meetings because that is something that's important for road commissioners, road commissioners to attend, even though I haven't been real good about it, to get it out into the county.
You know, when residents actually think that you're, when you're there, as, as I've heard numerous times, that we are getting paid to be there and we're supposed to be there. That's true, as singles, you guys.
We're not getting a per diem, no.
I know, but.
Roll into our salary. We set the per diem.
See, the hard part about it is, is, uh, you know, how do you, how do you address that, you know, like the attendance of, of township meetings if there isn't some sort of compensation? The only other way to do it is make it mandatory. You know.
Yeah, we don't get a compensation as part of our monthly, our monthly salary.
Which, you know, and again, you know, um, the reality of people, some people will never go if it don't have a financial impact. And, you know, there's, because of my situation with my insurance, I typically didn't charge when I went to township meetings because of the fact that I was thankful that I had my insurance. So, you know, that's the difference in people. So there's no real clear cut. And, and, and I do agree with, you know, maybe the, maybe the, the, um, the night meeting pay would be something that we could. the night meeting pay would be something that we could maybe take off the table. If we increase the
Go back and talk to the other commissioners and see what you want. Come back to us with the right
See how many night meetings they're attending, see if an incentive would, because residents do like seeing you there, especially, you know, in winter and spring when the roads are awful. Roads in blight are the number one and number two things that we hear about at these meetings. So I think residents like seeing you there, but see how many they attend and if an incentive would help. You guys agreed? Yes, no?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Oh, I, I, I think, I think
Spending their money.
Probably get some input from Mr. Ranky. Yeah, that, that's something that was, I, I You know, so he's the manager there and that is the consensus from the, the commissioners themselves, but I think.
Does he manage the budget?
Yes.
He is the same as Tim to us. We hired, we hired him, they hire him.
Yeah, I mean, Randy and, and Pat work closely together to set the budget for us to approve.
Perfect. So more information to come. You'll be in contact as well?
Yeah, I will depend on Commissioner Scott to report back with the numbers there. We'll plug him into the resolution and we'll be good to go.
Perfect. Thanks. Um, item ninety, claims, claims of a total of five hundred and thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars and one cents. Commissioner Serbik and I reviewed claims. Commissioner Serbik, you have the floor.
I would make the motion.
Oh, yes.
Pay the bills and then we can discuss them.
I'll support that. Oh, sorry. It's my fault. I'll support that. Commissioner Serbik, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Chair. Um, payroll and fringes came to four hundred and twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and ninety-four dollars and sixty-eight cents. Needless to say, that's a big chunk. You know, and I, I looked at what we're paying for MERS and I just, to be honest with you, I know I've seen these figures before, but the breakdown between defined benefit was a hundred and fifteen thousand, one hundred and ninety-three dollars. And the DC program fifteen, six, nineteen fifty-one. What a difference between defined benefit
What was defined again?
Defined benefit, a hundred and fifteen thousand, one hundred and ninety-three dollars.
Hundred thousand dollar difference?
Yes, almost. Just shy of a hundred thousand dollar difference.
And they don't think they get enough.
There was UKG was our, our annual was three thousand dollars. One that jumped out at me, Circuit Court, they had to take in their renting the KC Hall for jury selection to the tune of seven hundred dollars.
I get that one wrote down too.
Yeah.
We got a deal on that as well.
That is a deal?
The first number I got was double.
Wow. Wow, 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 for jury selection.
You think the stable last door is empty?
One that I was really pleasantly surprised about was the Zoom sub, annual Zoom subscription. Hundred and fifty-nine dollars and ninety cents. That's a, I, for as much as we utilize Zoom, I think that's excellent. That price. I really, I mean, we use it a lot, so I think if we broke it down to how many times we use Zoom versus a hundred, basically a hundred and sixty bucks a year? What, three dollars a meeting maybe? If for that, you know, so I'm, I just, I, it just, I was pleasantly surprised by that one is what I'm trying to say.
Board meetings, we do it for, we Zoom for all the
Meetings, I know, that's what I'm saying is for, if you looked at the number of meetings that we have that are available via Zoom, it's a heck of a deal. So I'm just, I was just very pleasantly surprised to see that figure for as much as we utilize it. So I think we're getting, getting our bang for the buck on that one for sure. The uh, bill for the elevator was in there. I don't think the work's been done on it yet, but um, the sixty-two hundred dollars on that. The inmate uh, medical bill, seven thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine, twenty-eight. The meals, and I was gonna, I, inmate meals was six twenty-two fifty from Rancheros. Wasn't it ten dollars per meal that we were? I meant to, I was gonna take him and get a hold of the sheriff or the undersheriff and ask them about that because the six twenty-two fifty, if it's ten dollars a meal doesn't, the math doesn't add up there. So I was just gonna
It's just a general bill. It's very odd.
It, it's not itemized. It doesn't give us the number of meals that were served. If we could get a more, more of a breakdown on that.
Cause there was
The number of meals. And, and, and I understand the, the breakfast one that they do at Walmart. They go in and they buy the little cups. So it shows, you know, a dollar, a dollar, a dollar, a dollar, a dollar. You can see the milk on there, two gallons of milk and whatever the price of milk was and stuff. So I can understand that one, but if we could get a little bit better breakdown on the uh, number of meals that were given from Rancheros, I think that would be helpful. So we can look at that. Karen, God bless your soul, title check property visits, fourteen thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars. But it was three hundred and sixty-four visits, so that's only forty dollars a visit. When you look at the big pictures like holy cow, but at forty dollars a visit, not. And then um, eh, I gotta give a shout out and I don't know if Jeff's on there or not, Jeff's on it. Veterans, they were um, able to assist a veteran's widow with the, a propane bill and because she was behind, they put her on basically cash on delivery and they were able to help her out and get her filled up with propane to the tune of one thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars and sixty-four cents. She's a widow. She's um, a cancer patient. And she fell behind and like I said, they were able to help her out and make that happen. So hats off to the veterans, people for making that happen.
I had a lot of the same things wrote down. Ogumah Humane Society, we, the twelve thousand, five hundred dollars. Uh, my Michigan inmate bill, seven thousand. That was for one visit to the emergency room uh, for an inmate.
I wonder if there's supposed to be some
Seven thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Paul's actually working with Blue Cross on that. We might see some of that come back. Um, that was um, during, during the transition period and there's some timing issues. He's still working it. So there's potential some of that coming back, but he did not want us to be referred to a collection agency and we do want to remain in good standing with the hospital. So we'll uh, get it paid, but we'll continue to work with the insurance carrier to maybe get some of it back.
The Arnet County inmate bill for housing bill uh, was sixteen hundred dollars, which isn't terrible. And then I saw Road Patrol Village, eighteen boxes of Kleenex underneath the Road Patrol Village for forty dollars and eighty-eight cents. I thought that was odd to see it underneath the Road Patrol Village.
I was sneezing, so, yeah, I don't know. That's a good point.
But then I also seen a credit card for two hundred and I didn't see the statement with it is why the administrator, it's two hundred and fifty dollars. But did you have some education? I didn't see any
That was a, well, that's odd for me. Um, that's the uh, annual dues for GFOA.
Okay. I just didn't see an explanation with it. And then the treasurer I wrote down is two property inspection visits for thirty-six thousand, five hundred and fifty-one dollars and sixty-eight cents. Um, so I also asked Rancheros, um, we've talked about this a couple, I was just getting a, it's a very basic bill that'll say
Inmate meals.
Hamburgers. No, it doesn't even say bad.
So this one didn't have any, any detail on whatsoever.
And that's a lot of money. I, I'm, you know, maybe it's over a, a month period. I, I don't know. There's no way to tell anything. That's just what it says. So we do need a better tracking for that. So that's all that I wrote down as well. You, you touched on everything else.
Yeah, I had that inmate bill too and that was from, as Tim said, from September second.
And then the medical examiner, their, their uh, other information is, is pretty neat to look at. It's a lot, uh, related to autopsies. Um, it's, uh, I don't even know what all breakdown they had. Pickups, um, investigations, toxicology screens. It's, it's kind of neat to see um, what's all happening in the county, so.
Then there was our, one I jumped over accidentally was uh, twenty thousand dollar, our share to the, regarding the Fox case. Funding went to McComb County, isn't it, Karen?
And that came from the treasures. So that should be done.
No, this is just the start of it. So we had to do a twenty thousand dollar deposit to
This is upfront money?
To, to upfront the case. Every county involved in the lawsuit had put twenty thousand into the pool. When the class settlement reaches the court stage and awards are made to the claimants, the McComb County Treasurer will distribute to the claimants and on a quarterly basis will, will bill each county and will have to pay the invoice when it comes quarterly. It'll start sometime in the spring.
Some more to come on that.
Tax reversion fund, which is sale proceeds from prior auctions, not taxpayer money.
We'll call it. Roger Mahew.
Yes.
Mark Serbik.
Yes.
Greg Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David. Yes. Unfinished business. Any commissioners?
Boy, I spoke to chairs now.
Administrator slash controller's report.
Um, I want to report to you that I did finally hear back from DHHS about the privatization issue with mental health. And they declined the invitation to present to you uh, their position because this is now in litigation and they didn't feel it'd be appropriate. However, on October first, at the Michigan Association of Counties Conference, the director of DHHS is going to address the entire group at a lunch session. Uh, and I'm sure this topic will come up. Even more interesting, certainly on the heels of that, there's going to be a session featuring the Associate Director of the Community Mental Health Association of Michigan, who's specifically going to talk about the privatization proposal and the impacts it'll have. Uh, so that was enough for me. I went ahead and signed up. I can make a day trip out of it. Uh, and we'll take in both of those sessions and I'll be able to report back and then talk about whether we want to go on record with the resolution. I understand after diving into this a little bit more that uh, this is in motion now. It's, it's no longer a discussion.
I know we've released it.
Which is why the, the legal action, I guess, was initiated. Uh, so whether we go on record or not, it looks like they're ready at the state level to proceed with this. Maybe a resolution from Ogumah County will derail it. Maybe not, probably not. But um, at least we'll be better informed and can make an informed decision as to whether you want to do that.
Any questions?
I was at a committee meeting with Will Wayne today and I was asked about the resolution and I told him that we had received that and Tim relayed to me the other day that he'd received the, the thank you but no thank you invitation from MDHHS, which I'm not surprised at. And they would still, if we wouldn't entertain it at whatever point in time, authorizing a resolution in support of uh, in support of them not proceeding with the RFP, they would still like to have one from us, so.
Any questions for Tim?
None.
That's it, right, Tim?
Yes.
Okay, elected officials and department head reports. Clerk?
Brett Gilner, you're Ogumah County Clerk. Um, last week, I spent two days in Lansing. The Bureau of Elections put on a really good two-day training, um, just breakout sessions of everything to do with elections. It was very, very informative. Um, and I, I did learn a lot. Um, today I took Alicia, my criminal court clerk. We went to Clare County because we had a district, the district, three county clerks. We all met and we had a training from the, one of the state workers in regards to abstracting driver's licenses on all drug and alcohol charges. Um, I've, since I've been here, I've never had a training in regards to that. So I learned a lot. Alicia learned a lot. Um, right now, we're, we're there are a lot of trainings being offered. Um, and with it being a non-election year, I've been trying to take advantage as much as I can, um, just because I have the time and can can take part in them. So, um, good information. Brought a bit, brought a lot back with me um, to use in the future. So I'm happy about that. That is, oh, oh, I don't know if I said out loud with Ladonna having um, the presentation last week about the veterans and taking the old jail sheriff, sheriff's department down. I know I've told a couple of you this, but I don't think I've told everybody in regards to the stuff that's stored over there of my stuff. Um, I was in contact with the state and there's actually quite a bit of the vital records that we can send to them. So if we have them digitized, we can send them and it will take up less storage. So it'll be less that we need to find storage for. So that was, that was a good thing. Uh, and that is it.
Good evening, Karen Podolsky, Ogumah County Treasurer. Um, your cash summary report for August is on your iPads for you to review. Um, I'd like to mention that the um, tax sale that I held on August twenty-eighth was a very good one. I had thirty-three properties go to sale. Thirty out of the thirty-three sold. Um, total sales was three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars of that, eighty thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars will go to back taxes. And I want you to know, to not be alarmed when you see those title check invoices, because those are fees that are added to the property that we get back when we sell the properties. So I know it seems scary upfront when we're spending fifteen thousand dollars at at pop to title check, but the money does all come back to us at the time of the sale. Sam, don't be alarmed. We get that money back and it's all tax reversion fund. It's not taxpayer dollars. Um, and then as I mentioned earlier, when you were talking about the twenty thousand dollars upfront, so that's just the start of this process for the Fox case. And we're really gonna not have to pay again until spring. Once they get through all the settlement and the court makes the motion and files the amount for the claimants, McComb will pay the claimants. We will get built in, in an invoice on a quarterly basis, starting in spring. That's all money coming out of tax reversion, not taxpayer dollars. So again, it's not going to affect general fund.
It's pretty nice to get that behind us.
It would be very nice to put that behind us. Thank you.
Veterans? Jeff? He was on the phone. There is.
There is. Hello, there we go. Um, I'm here, I'm here. Can you hear me? Okay, all right. Push my spacebar down. Um, I'm coming to you because as you're aware, we have our two thousand twenty-five grant from the state. And we received fifty-five thousand and some change. And we're in a little dilemma here. Uh, we have been able to spend about twenty-four thousand and change on IT equipment and some uh, swag items do, that we give out at uh, events that we plan on attending. The problem that we're running into is the companies that we're purchasing from are requiring payment upfront. Well, as you're aware of, our credit limit for my department is only a thousand dollars. And to pay these upfront, they will not invoice us. I need about twenty-six thousand dollars upfront to finish off my two thousand twenty-five grant. Um, one of the companies, it's thirteen thousand and some change to purchase all the stuff. I got another one that's eleven thousand and change to purchase all the stuff from that one, then a couple of minor ones for about two thousand and three, and three hundred. Uh, the issue is, of course, the county department credit card doesn't even match the amount of money I need to purchase all this stuff. So I'm asking to get a credit limit increase or options that may be out there to where I don't have to give fifty-three thou, let's see, I got, the total grant was fifty-five thousand, five seventy-six. I've spent twenty-four, four, forty-six, leaving a balance of twenty-five thousand, about thirty thousand dollars sitting out there yet. That will go back to the state if we don't spend it. So I'm kind of looking for options, what we can possibly do to get this money spent before I have to give it back to the state at the end of the month.
Tim?
Just to preface this too, this is not because Jeff was delayed in any way. They ran into some uh, very unique challenges, I guess, and be polite about it, uh, through the state. They didn't release the funds or they didn't have enough funds budgeted and it was quite the go-around earlier in the year. So that's what created this crunch.
Right. We didn't get the final executed grant until July twenty-second.
So just a quick question. Now, they want their funds upfront. Will they take a check upfront or is it just credit card only?
The purchases on the timeframe we're at, it's a credit card upfront.
So the challenge is this, um, I think the amount that he needs is surpasses the amount that we even have as, as a, a organization. And Karen maybe can address that even better. Uh, but uh, this, this would be quite the acrobatic feat if we could pull it off, I think. Uh, and I'm just kind of grabbing at straws here for any other options. And it sounds like Jeff, I'm just gonna ask you again. They will only take a credit card? They, they won't accept a check even though our check is good?
The only company I haven't been able to Company I haven't been able to check with was AnyPro. Or, yeah, I think it's AnyPro. I, I forget what I, yeah, it's AnyPro, any product. They, that's thirteen thousand. That's the only one I haven't been able to verify whether they'll take a check upfront. Jared has talked with the individual company and, and he has advised me that they will only take the credit card for this upfront purchase. I spoke with VistaPrint yesterday after I got done with the emails with Tim. And I tried to talk him into, you know, all I need them is to invoice me this. I, they don't even have to give me the stuff. I just need an invoice so that I can pay the bill and then they can ship the stuff afterwards, but they would not do it without, they said they would not do it any other way. And this is VistaPrint. They would not only do it through the credit card. And VistaPrint's gonna run me about, I think, I think on there, I think it was eleven thousand and some change.
Tim, what can you do about this?
I'm not hearing any good options. I mean, it's sounding like, Jeff, even if we were to max out all the county cards, you're still not at the number you need, right?
Correct. I, I don't think, and Karen could probably speak better than this, that the credit card company won't increase. I, I don't understand how a multimillion dollar county can only have a twenty-four thousand dollar credit limit. Doesn't make sense to me, but it is what it is. If I can get a credit limit increase on my card, we could at least purchase some of the stuff that we have. It's all sitting in carts waiting to be purchased. All we gotta do is click the button, put the information in, and it's done. But yeah, I can follow up tomorrow with AllPro. But I'm, I'm, I have asked Jared this several times, is there any, will they take a check in advance? And he, he has told me that, that, that they will not do that.
Karen, do you have anything to add to this? Do you want to come on up so everybody can hear?
Sure. So I emailed Tim to let him know that our county overall is only like twenty-four thousand three hundred. When we first started issuing cards to departments, didn't have this kind of activity. And we've never seen the type of activity that Jeff is speaking of. Most departments have a thousand dollar credit limit and it's more than enough to handle office supply purchases. So this is a very unique situation. And his grant purchases exceed what our credit limit is. So I, unless we go back to the bank and ask them to increase the credit limit overall for the entirety of the county, and I don't know what that process would be. And it's certainly not gonna happen overnight in the timeframe that he's probably hoping it would happen.
I, I don't want to do that. I'd see if there's another option.
AD loan?
I, I don't know what to tell him. So far, the limit that we have for the county works for everybody. And I hate to expand credit limits and things get out of control. Like, I like the control factors that we have in place for the departments, so.
Well, I, I don't think it's, I don't think this would be that much of an issue because I have twenty-five thousand dollars in cash sitting with the county right now that, that is gonna go back to the state that has not been spent. So I mean, if I could get, if we could just get that, be able to use that twenty-five thousand dollars for the limited time that we have, that's what we're looking at.
If they'll take a check and, you know, that you can pay, I'm just saying, I don't think you're looking for these purchases to happen right away. I, I don't know what the process is to increase our credit limit for the county through the card, and it doesn't sound to me like it would be anything that would happen overnight. It's like.
VistaPrint will not take anything but a credit card. I've already verified that with them. I'll follow up with the other company tomorrow. I just couldn't get in contact with them the other day. But I will follow up with them tomorrow when I get into work and see if they are willing to do a check in advance.
Is it anything a local company could do for you and invoice you here?
Not that I'm aware of. Jared's done all the, it's all design stuff with our logo and like, I, I don't know if that's, if you've seen the T-shirts or not, but we have beanies and hats and pens. Business cards through VistaPrint.
My other, my other, not to cut you off, Jeff, but my other suggestion would be if either one of you have a personal credit card to make the purchase yourself and ask for reimbursement, your claims.
I don't, I don't think either one of us has any. I know I don't, but there's no way that I could do that.
Jeff, since this is an issue primarily created by the state, is there a chance that they would extend your deadline? Now, you've got everything lined up. You can show them, my card is here. It's all lined up. I just have to space it out a little bit. If they give you like a sixty-day extension, you can assure them that the funds will be spent. I don't know how flexible they are.
Think that's the case with the state. I'll have to double check, but they're pretty strict on how they're doing the funds. I don't know what we're gonna do next year because they, they've come out and said they're not doing the advance next year for the twenty-six grant. We haven't gotten approved yet, but we've got a fifty-three thousand dollar request out there for that one. And they're, they're, excuse me, excuse me. They are not advancing any money for the upcoming year.
You know, there are local, talking about design companies and I, we, we are really working on trying to stay local as much as possible. There are numerous, and I'm not saying for this year, but maybe into next year, you guys can start looking at some local designs. I know there's one in Stanish. I think there's one here locally in West Branch. It, it would have made this situation maybe a little bit easier. I'm just saying for in the future, Jeff, we really are trying to, to.
Oh, yeah. No, I understand. I'm just trying to figure out a way to, we're not, not to give the money back. You know, we have the money sitting here and we just gotta figure out a way to spend it. Otherwise, like I said, it's just, we wasted our time, we wasted your time. We wasted the state's time because we end up giving the money back. I am sure that's what the state wants because they've been really difficult this year. And, and it's not just our county that's running into this difficulty. It's other counties that have run into it also. And we're running in the same problem with the twenty-six grant. So it's not just our county that's having problems.
Commissioner Scott.
Well, Karen, you said, is there somebody locally can handle this? Is, is this, I, I don't know what, call Office Central, ask them, they can buy the twenty-four thousand dollars worth of stuff and we'll cut them a check right tomorrow.
That's what I, I have some really good vendors that I work with constantly.
The Central's creating dog license.
Well, yeah, but I mean, can, can they absorb a twenty-four thousand dollar purchase?
In this short.
On this shorter period with their card and we'll pay them tomorrow. And, and or, I can't believe that they won't take an ACH payment. I mean, that's like, that's almost like a certified check. They look right into our bank account.
We don't typically pay vendors by ACH.
Oh, okay.
Check.
Well, it's just.
I, I'll check with the big one. The big one that we got is VistaPrint. It, it's, it's a big, it's a big part of our stuff. But the other, the All-Pro one, that's thirteen thousand dollars. I'll check with them. If we can get that one spent, if they'll take a check, we'll get that one ordered right away and then we'll just, we'll blow off the VistaPrint for this year and we'll, we'll, we'll try, maybe we'll amend our twenty-six grant and do what we need to do.
Try to check locals, see what they're able to do. Maybe you can't get your full order, but it, maybe you can spend what money you have locally. And maybe it won't be quite as much, but.
What's your deadline for spending the money?
September thirtieth.
So you have time.
Yeah, you have. You, I'm telling you, there are a couple vendors that I literally send them pictures of something and they have me a design by the end of the day and it's.
I can, I. T-shirts, other items.
Office Central's very, very good. McTaggert's is really good.
Yeah.
I, I can follow up. I'll find out. I just don't know what the state, whether they'll allow it to do it that way, whether we have to amend the grant. We're, we're done passing amendment, mending our grant. It just depends on what the requirements. I'll have to go into the grant and read what it, what it allows us to do and not do.
Okay. Thank you. Any other elected officials, department heads? I don't think I missed anybody in the room. Anybody on the phone? Tom, did you have anything?
No, I'm all set. Thanks.
We have, there's some department head reports in our iPads. I had a question. Was there any update? We have Building Inspections Department, Information Technology Department, Jail and Mate Statistics, Ray Animal Shelter Report, Treasurer's Cash Summary Report, Register of Deeds, and the Medical Examiner Report. Is there any update on the Animal Control Officer? The report?
Law Enforcement Committee meeting last week and I believe they said, I'm just going from memory, in fact, the minutes are there. I think they said they had six applicants.
I, I read them. That's why I was asking if there was any further update.
I think nothing new from last week anyway.
Okay. Anderson on the floor, Annie?
Well, Commissioner Wills had a hole me earlier today, just sent me a text message and I'll just, I'll just run it past you. I mean, I should, should we write a, should Ogumon County Commissioners write a letter to the rep, state rep and the state senator regarding the importance that we don't lose state funding at the county level, most of all revenue sharing? I don't see any point in writing a letter or even having a resolution. I think they already know that we want it. Mac sure is knocking on their door to make sure that they share.
Okay, Mac knocked on my door at about four o'clock during email.
Oh, yeah.
They sent the draft resolution to all counties, so it'll be on committee of the whole next week.
Oh, okay.
Anything else, Commissioner? Motion for adoption? Commissioners reports. Commissioner Scott?
Well, I was able to go to the road commission yesterday and lost the township first Tuesday night. The city meeting was last week, city meeting the, I think I talked about the city meeting last. Was Monday night this week? Dude, I don't know. I can't remember when Monday night was. I think it was Monday night. Anyway, yeah, there's one neighborhood's up in ours because they heard, they heard that they're gonna get a sidewalk and they don't want one. And and, and, but the street projects are coming along. It looks like everything will be paved by dimes, no flies. Boston Township was an hour long and really didn't get too far out of hand. The road commission was good. What was the other point that you guys were? Oh, winter, winter, winter afternoon shift they talked about and I brought up again about winter weekend shift. And so I guess they're, they got a planned attack coming for something coming next, next meeting, so I'll, I'll wait and see what we hear about that. Airport's next week, Ogumon Township's next week. Yeah, everything's going good. I mean, I'm getting questions all the time about how everything is going and and I, I tell them, I think things are really looking good for, for you at the end of the fiscal year. Yeah.
Parks and Rec?
Commissioner.
Oh, yeah, go ahead with Parks and Rec.
No.
Commissioner Surruck.
I'm sorry. Didn't mean to interrupt. I attended Horton, pretty much business as usual for Horton. Edwards Township, which is always an interesting township meeting. They spent probably forty-five minutes discussing whether they were gonna do BSNA other than just the treasurer. Ultimately, there was a motion made and there was no support, so they are gonna stick with QuickBooks for now. It appears, Roger and I both attended West Branch Township last night. They enacted three different policies in regards to the West Branch Commons, which is what they're building there. It's M seventy-six and the Business Loop. According to what we were given last night, they have been assured by Three Rivers, the corporation that is, that's doing that construction, it will be completed by the fourteenth of October. So they are looking at having like an opener flea market, farmer's market kind of thing there, which will not start until twenty twenty-six. They're gonna run that April through November. They took and they made some decisions on what they're gonna charge for utilizing that building and things. There's a couple of different buildings there which they're gonna.
What location are you talking about?
West Branch Commons, the township, though West Branch Steel.
And that's seventy-six right there?
Yes, seventy-six in the business.
I want to make sure I understood.
Yep, yes. The long-awaited marijuana dispensary by Walmart was supposed to have their license issued today. So they should be open for this very, very soon if they're not already. They addressed a lot of some blight issues that are going on in the township. They have the city police contract. City police have been issuing their tickets for them, so they're working on their blight stuff. We had Parks and Rec this morning. We met at the secret campground. We had a very good meeting, looking at possibly increasing fees. They're gonna we're there at the campground. They're gonna get costs of what other campgrounds in the area are you like, charging. Cause this Commissioner Scott has made a very good point. I agree a hundred percent. We shouldn't be undercutting the private campgrounds. You know, we don't pay property taxes, they do. So we're just trying to get some ideas as to where they are and we'll set some fees accordingly. Last week, I believe Commissioner Scott told us about the Dr. Short and his crew, the air, the jets were supposed to come into the airport Saturday. Unfortunately, they did not. Because of the weather, they didn't have a tall enough ceiling. They needed five thousand feet for them to be able to do their thing. And it was only like thirty-five hundred, but they did have a good turnout out there. They provided hamburgers and corn on the cob and all sorts of things, so people at least got to have a meal and is like, what did they call it? Hangar fly. And NIMSCUT is having their, have they're having an open house for their Early Childhood Development Center, which is on Dam Road, south of M fifty-five, the old J E M Fluid Power. That will be tomorrow from two PM until five. Refreshments will be available there. So if anybody, they're gonna have activities for kids, so if anybody's interested in going to that, again, two to four tomorrow. And that concludes, we'll be the claims as well, so.
And that's, what is that, Dam Road? I know it's for NIMSCUT, but what is it gonna be?
It's their, their new Head Start. They were out by the expressway, Cook Road. They have, they are leasing this building on Dam Road, south of M fifty-five. It's about quarter, maybe a half a mile south was the old J E M Fluid Power building. They had that. There was a company that renovated it and they're leasing that for their.
Good.
For the Early Childhood Development, early, what are they, there's Head Start, no, what do they call it? Early Head Start, where it's younger kids. They're gonna have both of those in there, so.
Commissioner Mahew.
I went to Rose Township. They were pretty happy from month to August. The dump broke even.
Hey.
That the dump, huh?
I'm telling you, it, it, everywhere you go, they have trouble with dumps. It cost them. I asked Rose Township about the bookkeepers there in Rose City. They use them, they like them. They said that if you call, they call back.
The auditor.
They were really tickled with them. Hill was there. I guess they had some trouble with their fireboard. Somebody got let go. And they come to Rose Township and
I thought I heard it's through the commission.
Forty-five minutes later, they got told that it was Hill's problem. Rose Township wasn't, wasn't having problem. That was pretty much the end of that. And the only thing I told them was I was at the meeting oh, like nine months ago. Lupton was a
Private.
Private owned, letter deal, whatever it was. And if they would have let that close or collapse or liquidated or whatever, the money would have went to charity. Not to the firemen, not to the township, not to the taxpayers. And that's when Hill and Rose decided to take it because if they hadn't, they'd have lost everything they had. And, and I let the people know I was at that meeting and that's, and I thank the townships for taking care of it because it would have been a great, great loss to the taxpayers. And that's pretty much it. March got everything West Branch was up to.
I did attend that and I briefly said, informed everybody what happened last week at the Hill Township meeting that I was at. Has there been, have you heard anything more from anyone? I know since, have you?
I have. But I haven't asked either. I, actually, I can look tomorrow. I actually, I can look tomorrow and see and I will, I'll see you.
So yes, you're correct. It used to be Lupton Fire Department. There was only two or three private fire departments left in the entire state. And Rose and Hill stepped in and purchased them. So now the townships own the fire department. And they have a fire board and there are three representatives from Hill Township that sit on the fire board. And the meeting I went to there at Hill um, was a total disaster and, and part of that reason was um, they had some valid questions, some valid concerns. Again, the supervisor had no control of the meeting whatsoever. People were out of order, yelling, screaming, hollering, talking excessively repeatedly. Three of the board members um, sit on that board. There's five total on the Hill Township board. And they, they made a motion during the meeting to remove one of the fire board members who was a township board member. Without having a public hearing, without doing anything, and then they took a roll call vote and they removed. They took a vote to remove that individual off the fire board. And he sits on the commission board. He's actually the supervisor. So I don't know what's happened from then. Um, I, I left, it got very uncomfortable, very unnerving. Um, there was some pictures that kind of started all this. It sounds like a resident had taken some pictures, asking some questions about some equipment that was out on the lake. They were, it was right around fourth of July. They were um, patrolling for fourth, for fireworks, which is great. But a resident took some pictures, had some questions. One of the township board members or the fire board members took it and questioned the individual. It sounds like it was a little abrasive versus having conversation and dialogue. And it has escalated. It, it kind of wanted to be as far as liability and as family members allowed um, on the equipment uh, in the parade time and patrolling fireworks and you know, where, where is that liability? So it was, it was some valid questions. It, it's just escalated um, from there. And it seems there's a lot of politics that come with fire boards. I had no idea. Um, who we. So I, that's the second meeting I've attended at Hill. The previous one was the um, blight issue where I personally got attacked. As I was just saying, these meetings can be very torturous. Especially if you have a supervisor or um, a chairperson that, that, that takes no order and, and makes it a free for all, which is, I swore I'd never go back. On my better judgment, I did go back and I didn't even get to giving a report. I, 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 I walked out. It was an hour and forty five minutes and there was nowhere near any type of movement. So I left. I don't know how that meeting ended. Not sure at this time if I'll ever return. But anyways, I'll, I'll keep you updated on that. Um, nine on one, I attended that last night. Uh, they passed, we passed a twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six budget. Um, we are utilizing QuickBooks now. Pretty much all converted over. Um, this, the director over there has been a learning curve. She's doing a great job. The um, auditor has been working with her, but as of October one, she's supposed to be a hundred percent live with that. So that is saving some money. Um, we're also looking at a CAD, um, a system for uh, calls through the admin line. They get a lot of robo calls. Um, and it's, it's taking a lot of their time, a lot of their frustration. So a CAD system for the AI drops those calls. Apparently when those calls come in and they have to push it in number, certain numbers, it, it drops those calls. So it's kind of wasting resources, time. Um, it's something that a lot of places are using, even though they're very inconvenient, having to hit one and hit two and and that's just, that's not for the nine on one line. That is just for the admin. But the director over there is also able to, she's playing with the system, also reporting some uh, providing some statistics, which is very interesting. There'll be more to come as far as calls. How many calls? What kind of calls? Um, I know at the last MTA meeting, the sheriff gave some stats for each one of the townships of how many calls came in. I think it was per month or quarterly. I don't recall anyway, but all the townships did hear. Remember that?
Last six months.
Okay, that's what it was. But, but that didn't break it down as far as if, if there was calls. I mean, you could see everybody's faces. They were really surprised by those numbers, but that doesn't mean it was calls that needed respond, you know, the responded to, non-respond to. But, but anyways, she's playing with the system and getting some really neat information. So there'll be more to come on that. Did claims? Um, I did not. I had correspondence with uh, Logan Township. They uh, a, a resident over there was pretty upset about the cemetery and some trees and got a little belligerent with the supervisor over there and actually um, once it was proven he was in the wrong. Um, but going back to this job, not always being the greatest. Uh, the cemetery over there at Logan Township, I was just over there last week. It looks amazing. I, I really like seeing the ten, township cemeteries, um, kept up and, and look good. So also one of the trustees over there is going to be resigning, um, taking a position in, in a different uh, board that they're very much present in. So he's kind of going a different direction, but up. So there'll be more to come on that. And then I do claims.
Great.
Anything else? I missed Richland this, this month.
Well, well, I hope you're not thinking about taking that trustee job. Better just stay right here.
Uh, general public comment, Eddie? Yes, sir. Come on up.
Yes, been waiting patiently.
Uh, my name's Rob Ellerito. I'm the district director for state Senator Michelle Hoytenga. Uh, just wanted to give you guys a quick update. Uh, I know it seems like we've been working on it forever. The budget to this year's entering the fourth month, it seems. Uh, and no, there's no end in sight. Uh, uh, October one is the hard number. And that would take us to state shutdown. Um, unfortunately, I, I don't foresee any great progress coming in the next couple of weeks.
Oh, no.
Um, so, hold your breath. Hopefully, uh, they, they, they've still been in Lansing. They've been working. Um, house budget proposed, uh, which is much of what um, a lot of the cuts you mentioned and then please reach out to the Senator. Please call, uh, if you have concerns. We love to hear from you. Uh, but house budget is so drastically different than in the past. They, they built a budget, they zeroed all budgets out and built up, which is out of the norm. Normally the budgets take last year's budget and inflation's factored and it's adjusted up and down a little bit. So that's what the Senate's budget came out to be. Uh, which is, all the budgets are different than what the governor's request was. So um, they all three have to agree, you know, that they'll have to compromise on something and the governor's got to sign it. So um, it's uh, biting our nails. So we're trying to factor that in and uh, so if you have concerns, by all means, please reach out, express your concerns. Because it's gonna take a compromise to get that final budget for October one. So, uh, is there any questions?
I'm gonna allow you guys to ask questions if you have them.
I, I'll, I'll leave him a card.
Thank you. Your questions?
Yeah, um, last, last month I contacted your office. Um, and uh, to push to uh, legalize Zoom for uh, uh, commissioner meetings or public meetings, I should say, not just commissioner meetings. Uh, it worked very well in COVID. Uh, but ratcheting back the technology, we have the technology. And there's no reason why we're not using it. Now, if they want to put some kind of limitations on, on it, no more than three meetings in a row or something like that, I don't get it. But at least let's start getting a step toward using it. Um, we can't even deliberate on it.
No, no, no. Who means that?
Yeah, we can't even deliberate on it. So um, each one of us has been off for a meeting at one time or another. We're not able to come back on except public comment.
Yeah, and I've been in your shoes, Commissioner. I, I was a, a county commissioner at CGO.
I worked twelve.
And you were twelve, I thirteen though. I used to be twelve. Um, however, uh, yes, going through COVID as a county commissioner, it, it's how we live, yes. Um, there, there has been a push. Uh, and it comes down to having, having to amend the open meetings act and um, it, it's gonna take, it seems like the northern counties are more receptive to that because of the remoteness, right? Because of the travel, uh, whereas the southern counties don't have that issue. Um, and it took COVID to allow that amendment.
I sat on a four county board for yeah, uh, health department. And we're all traveling, you know?
Yes.
It's nuts. Uh, you said on what, uh, twelve county?
Um, but it's also a cost. Like it makes no sense.
A lot of cost, a lot of.
You're paying mileage for us to travel. I mean, come on. When literally our Zoom bill, we just seen.
Yeah, yeah.
It's absurd. You're looking at saving money. It's absolutely crazy, but I appreciate.
But your questions, it, it is definitely a common question.
Yeah, you know, I'm here till twenty eight, so I'd sure like to see it happen before that. You know?
I appreciate your.
And that's not a cost to the state.
Right.
I don't, not a big one at least. So it's gonna be a savings for a lot of people. This is something should be acted on. And it's gonna help either party. I mean, he was, I mean, you know?
But uh, I know it's been brought up the past years and for some reason somebody kills it. It, it constantly gets killed in committee or it gets brought to the floor and gets killed. So um, it's gonna take a movement. I we, we, we continue, we, we're in favor of it. Uh, of, of allowing, yeah, that, that's, that's, yeah.
Any questions, Mr. Rayo? Any questions, Commissioner?
Sarek? Do you know how the Senator stands on this PIHP bid out that MDHHS is doing? I, I said on our community mental health board. MDHHS has sent out this proposal, request for proposals for PIHPs, which will, they're looking at three across the state. There's currently ten. The ten that are in the state now are unable to bid on this thing. Do you know, do you know anything about it? Do you know?
I would have to check on, on where we're sitting on, on, on that one.
I mean, you know, it's, it's not anything, I mean, when, when Sherkey was in, he tried to do it through changing of legislation.
Right.
MDHHS is basically trying to do the same thing, but administratively.
Right.
So there are several things in the, in the mental health code that and there's double litigation. I think you probably heard the county administrator one.
So.
The legislators, I understand, don't have, you know, any say over what MDHHS does. I mean, Elizabeth Hertel does what Elizabeth Hertel wants to do. But I'm just wondering if there's any, and I know they grilled her the other day, they say something fierce at an oversight committee meeting. Um, and I don't know if that subject got brought up during that meeting or not, but I'm just curious as to, you know.
The current one done by the bureaucracy is, is not favored. And it would, would prefer it be done legislatively, so it can be amended or adjusted or so as far as that goes, yes, the Senator prefers to do it legislatively than
Than administratively.
Administrative, yes.
Tim, do you have anything?
Well, there's tons of stuff, but we probably better do it over the phone or something, so.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Thanks for coming, sir.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Any public comment on the phone? No public comment on the phone? Motion to adjourn?
Yep.
Support. All in favor?
Up here.
Yeah. Motion adjourned.